Takes place July 1 that it would be a good time for us to provide some updates on our projects that we've been working on. And that is our, well, what we're going to do today, we're going to talk about both some projects on our trails and greenways. We're going to talk about our project management office updates, which are some of our capital projects. And then we'll also have an update from our engineering team on some of our NIB projects as we're about to release our second round of NIB funding and bonding. We wanted to really set the stage for this because if you'll recall from State of the City, the theme of the State of the City from this year was to create a positive Greenville mixed quality of life for all Greenvilleians. And that is what we're continuing to do. And we're talking about investments in neighborhoods that impact people. These are people investments and what they are going to do to provide a better quality of life for all in our community. And so that's something that we think is very important and we want your feedback on these projects as we're moving forward. And to ensure that we are headed in the right direction. So we will start today with our project management office, which is led by Jeff Waters. And Jeff and his team will take it from here to really go through all of the great things that their, their team is leading. And then we'll move over into our updates from Patricia and Clint on our neighborhood infrastructure bond update. But Jeff's got with them his team and they're ready to go. So Jeff, I'll turn it over to you and I'll probably jump in some. Jeff will give me the eyeballs if I'm supposed to not jump in.
Oh, how the tables.
Yes, oh, the table switch. All right, Jeff.
All right, so we'll start as soon as we get it loaded up with update on some front projects and Kaylin's going to walk us through that.
I'll start off fast because there's a lot of people out to be here.
And we will have the slides we're recording and we'll have the slides posted right after the meeting. So for any of our partners in the room that would like the information, we'll have the slides right after the meeting. All right, Mr. Waters.
All right.
Okay, one of us is actually going to lead us. Kaylin's our mobility coordinator for those that don't know Kaylin.
Hello. Well, I got some updates on some, a few of the projects that I'm working on right now. And the first one we're kicking off with is one that hopefully y'all have had a chance to see. It's coming, coming to a close, but the Cancer Survivors Boardwalk Tread Surface Replacement is complete. The tread surface is down, the final coating is down. We are working on some final things related to bunch list items and we are redoing the coating on the handrails as an add-on because once that new tread surface got in, the handrails were looking a little bit dated. But we're going to give those a fresh coat and then that should be done in the next couple of weeks and then the project could be closed out. So it's looking great. Cancer Survivors Alliance is really happy with the project and as, as our staff, so.
Great action.
Yep. Lawrence Road Connections, the trail along Lawrence Road, the, the connections A and C, which are at Nickel Town and Henderson Road Connections are moving forward or waiting on 90% plans for that. We hit a little bit of a snafu with some private property along connection B, which was the industrial road connection. In light of that, we have some project savings and we're going to be looking at some alternative connections along the same area of Lawrence Road. So we have some probably some really good options I think that are going to be coming down the pipe here shortly. And I'll be including y'all in, in those updates when they're available. Orange Line, everybody's excited about, there's kind of three distinct things happening with the Orange Line. As you know, some annexations have happened north of Bramble Road that have brought some sections of that portion of the Orange Line into city limits. Right now, the Orange Line peels off onto West Washington Street and we have the ride on short section of the roadway itself. There's actually an old train bridge that is just off of the road. It's kind of covered by Hudson right now. And we are working with ReWalk who has a sewer upgrade project and Duke who actually owns the property to acquire the rights to upfit that bridge for the trail. So you'll be able to do the trail crossing, just like it happens on West Washington Street and then peel off and go across that bridge to tie in right behind those water center apartments that are going in near Hampton Station.
And the structure of that bridge is still viable.
Yeah, there was a structural assessment that was done about a year ago and it is, it is viable for that. So we're working through some final approvals from ReWalk and Duke to be able to go through engineering on that.
And city manager, I can't tell you how excited the North Main folks are, District One folks. And if you, if you look at the Swamp Rabbit Trail, you know, it does go well south of District One and North Main. And then connecting that entire North Main, Delwood, Stone Lake to the Swamp Rabbit Trail is going to be huge for our neighborhood. So thank you.
So I want great actions for everybody. John White wants the green line from the, from Verde the other day and it, it's really nice. As all the other hundreds of people out there with me get it tested.
I've got some really good numbers on my last slide to let you know the fact of the trail as well.
And what's the length of that? What's, what's the entire length of?
It's going to depend on final routing. I can get that for you whenever we have it. But so number one, was that bridge I was talking about. Number two is the sections within the county, which is the, the existing railway or rail corridor rather. And we are still kind of waiting on final over southern approval to be able to use that for it is looking good. We are able to bypass some of the problem properties that were privately owned beforehand. They're modifying kind of the scope and, and overlay of that lease area. So that's really great news and that'll be a county project that I understand the county's programming sometime in the next two years to fund. But our responsibility will pick up at Warley, which is that number three, which is a study that we're going to do to figure out what the appropriate routing would be. And just to remind you, the three options that we're probably going to be studying are North Main Street corridor, Summa Drive corridor, Richland Creek corridor. The Richland Creek corridor is the most appealing, but also it was difficult because of private properties and grades. And just looking at it from the 30,000 foot, I think the North Main corridor is probably going to be the most feasible. But we're going to let the study take hold in public input and hold in ever so much as possible. Swamp Rabbit signage, we have kind of a few things happening here, but it all really boils, boils down to the point of we understand that there are issues on the trail. It's kind of humans are going to, going to humans as I say. And so, but we are doing our best to manage it the best way we can. And one of the first things that we can do is notification of what we expect out of trail users when they get there. And so the large sign on the right is under development right now. The verbiage on here and the aesthetics are kind of still under review. But the intent is that this would be a very large sign that would be placed at, at most of the Swamp Rabbit Trail access points throughout the entire network. So that people kind of understand the high level things of what we expect from the outside. That'll be teamed up with some of our, our way finding signage that are out there. We're going to be formalizing, finalizing, and then the speed limit reductions and signage throughout so people understand.
Be careful, people, you give people two lists to read.
Yeah.
They just read any of it.
That's right.
Yeah, that, that seems to be what's happening in the world with, with traffic and everything else. Oh no, I see that sign. One is bigger than you. Why didn't you see it? That's what's happening. Now, when you say B, do you mean B? I mean, are you talking six feet tall?
It'll probably be in the neighborhood of probably four, three to four feet tall. I would guess it, it'll be elevated and at eye level.
Thank you so much, so much. That's good. Elevation is wonderful. Yeah, because it's the little short people, they can't read that are not pro. I just want to be sure. I'm just saying, you know, sometimes we do things and it's for the little babies who can't even read.
Well, I, I can't tell you how many times I've had to educate my friends even.
Yeah.
Who complain about the strollers and this.
Yeah.
But when you say be kind, the space is designed for slow humans. It, it is designed for those people too.
That's right.
People need to remember that it's not to get your personal record going down trying your cycle.
Bicycle, that's right. V-cycle system is, is working well. I gave you guys an update that we were looking at some expansion of the system. I say V loosely, the V cycle is private. If you remember, it's not a city program, but we do license city, a, a station on city property. So there was a need within the Unity Park area for some additional stations. And we're looking at expanding what's available next to Rusty the Rabbit statue where's, where the existing racks are down to the walking center. So staff can take advantage as well as provide access for the public. And then some additional rack stations over where the baseball project was happening.
Good question or suggestion, this is kind of a Jeff and Tara issue. And that is about a unity park, especially on weekends, people who are parking the car in a major parking area, unity park, when they're getting on the trail. Kind of an observation, obviously parking, you Kind of an observation, obviously parking even on weekends is still tight out there on that main thing. And the thing I observe is a lot of that seeing the happening. I just, so it's a good question. Do we want to at some point encourage people who are parking their car to go on the trail? Maybe park, maybe we have a place where they park their car. Any thoughts on that?
Well, the gravel lots, I think, always don't get filled up as fast as the paved lot. I mean, that might be a good place to direct trail users as to use.
And now we don't have any rules on, speaking of rules, but maybe if we had rules and got the word out, so should mean otherwise. And that's where we want people to go. That would be, be a big help.
Same thing, but I think it's a combination of it.
Yeah, strategy and where to direct people to park depending on.
Managing our parking down there, which we've done a good job on the signage, it's great, we have offsites, all that's good. It's just one of these issues, we just keep watching it and see if we don't need to make an adjustment. Whatever, interesting what y'all find. I mean, that's my observation, whether it's true or not, our people park.
Well, after they're on the trail. In addition to Vcycle in the Unity Park area, this is an old photo, obviously, because the, the maintenance facility is coming on, it's much different there. But you might see a pad with some pipes sticking out of the ground, just this side of the maintenance facility, right off of the access pathway. And we're gonna be installing a bike fix-it station as a pump and tools and places you can hang your bike to work on it, as well as a water, water bottle filler. And we've run water line too as well.
Are we gonna do an advertisement on radio and television?
For the?
Everything, particularly when it comes to the parks and changes that we're doing. Because oftentimes people hear it in their car and it might alert them to some things. Because the more advertising we do, the better, the better it is.
Yeah, I think we can definitely look into getting word out.
We'll work with our communications team on that. Thanks, Councilman.
Bridgeport Estates Trail, if you remember from the council retreat, is a, it's approximately a one mile corridor that's being, half of it. So half a mile is gonna be privately developed. That's a paved trail, the other half is gonna be reserved for future expansion south. But we'll have a trail placement over top of it. And it kind of connects this right here to Bridgeport Estates Development. There's gonna be just under 500 residential units there that are being put in. And the Laurel Creek corridor fall is kind of exactly where we're putting the trail. It's one of the most beautiful sections that exists in, in the Greenville area. And I think it's gonna be a really popular section. The larger context is this is the S V I C campus. And so crossing the Lawrence Road corridor at some point, tying into that, will tie into the, the green line of the Swamp Rabbit Trail that will come involved in. And then south of this will connect down in the city.
Does that cross the old Lawrence Road Bridge, that historic bridge?
It, it, it goes directly beside it. There's currently a process of turning that into a historic.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
And, and what are we doing to ensure that the privately owned piece is up to our standards? Or they, that we're, we've been involved since day one. So all the engineering is kind of running through us and, and the review process. They're also having to submit for city permitting as well, so that.
I know people kind of know what this is, but just that's the Punningsworth plant at the top. By the way, that section is not in the city agreement. They never annexed it. That's an issue that we, of course, care about. And that's the new BMW dealership over in the top left. So it's a major opportunity for them, but.
It's beautiful out there.
Yes.
Upcoming RFPs that I'm gonna be releasing between River Street and Unity Park. There's an opportunity, I think, that, that everybody's aware that, that the trail's starting to show that it's age all over the place. But that one is one of our most notable sections because it is the, it's the gateway to Unity Park and it's the connector from downtown to Unity Park. And so that's gonna be the first, the first go that I have to upfit what we have and kind of maximize it for the enjoyment of everybody. And it's gonna, it's gonna be a pretty robust scale of work. It was originally just gonna be trail lining and repaving. And the more we talked about it, the more we understood that there was an opportunity to kind of do better. And we've done in the past. And so we're gonna be looking at a full lighting package, looking at drainage issues, looking at crossing treatments, looking at striping. We're gonna have a consultant kind of study the concept of separating user types. And so if we can get appropriate widths, we might be able to have a site of bicycle side of the trail and a pedestrian side of the trail to kind of connect. And kind of remedy some of the issues that we're, that we're trying to capture with signage. And so it'd be really intentional to make sure that we're designing for the results that we want to see, basically. In addition to that, the Orange Line study that I mentioned for the North Main neighborhood, Tennis Park Connector, which would kind of lead off with the Way Hampton Project Engineering is working on, provide connection via Dupont Drive. And then the skate park, contract park, kind of longer RFP process, which will include some really robust public input and community involvement. And this is my final slide. So I told you I have some numbers that are weird. We only had one trail counter last, last year. And so this is our first year that we're gonna have four trail counters. And so we have a larger look at what kind of use the trail is actually seeing. I estimated about 2 million people per year use of the city's trail network. And we are almost at a million as of today. These, these numbers were pulled this morning.
You're asking from January 1st?
From January 1st, that's right, up to today.
Yep.
And so to, to get a, a better look at what that means for the city, I have a trail survey that I'm gonna be putting, opening up to the public starting on Friday. And I'm gonna leave it out for two weeks. It's gonna be a signage-based QR code scan. And we're gonna use that data and measure it against the trail data that we, that we get from our trail counters to kind of extrapolate what that means across an entire year. And it's gonna provide a lot of really great information. It's about a five-minute survey, so hopefully everybody gets all the way through it. And it's gonna be looking at demographics, economic impacts, some tourism numbers, what people are doing on the trail, how they're using your time, where they're accessing it anymore. And so be watching for those.
We have paperclip up in March.
Paperclip officially driven cut June of last year, so.
Okay, so it's.
That's what. Is that breakdown 6733, is that across all four counters?
That's right. It varies from set from location to location.
Like how much?
I would say with up to 20%, depending on the location. For instance, what's, the Unity Park location sees a lot of pedestrian.
Yeah.
And the blue line, which is over the Applewoodland Way, sees a lot of pedestrians. Some, I mean, sometimes the split, and it really depends on the week too. Sometimes it's a 50/50 split and sometimes bikes take it on the week. That's an average across the entire year, across the entire network.
Kaylin, could you get us the breakdown for each of the counters that we could share with council?
Sure.
Of the height, of the head versus body?
Absolutely.
So we can send that to you guys.
Cool, thank you.
Moving on.
Thanks, Kaylin.
Absolutely.
Any questions on trails and greenways for Kaylin and the work that we've been doing in, with that?
It works out. Thank you for your work.
Great, okay, Jeff.
We have four facility projects we're gonna provide an update on. And the first one is Nickel Town Community Center. This is a major renovation to both the, the building and the grounds. Our budget, we have 1.84 million from the NIB, as well as a substantial contribution from the state and Representative Dillard. And she is also working now to get us an additional 50,000 on this year's budget. The facility will grow to 7,000 square feet. And we will also do a significant renovation of the grounds. We've got a multipurpose field, we're looking at new playgrounds, new shelters, renovating the parking lots that are in, in, in failing condition. And then, you know, the, looking at doing a multipurpose room, their big meeting room, that can accommodate up to about 216 people. We're in schematic design right now. We've got a demolition permit in, in place so that we can go ahead and start some early demo and remediation work. And then next week, we're looking at installing construction fencing, but also keeping the back ball court open as long as we can.
Okay, so we don't have a full architectural plan yet?
Not yet, we're working on it. We have an architect, we've been working with the Saford Group as well as Mrs. Dillard to make sure they're along throughout the process.
Yeah, I mean, I've been keeping touch with them. Everybody's very happy with, you know, the progress and the input and, and you guys keeping involved. So I'm very happy about that. I was just, just wondering what we were as far as the thing. So, so we're gonna put fencing on July 1st for.
Yeah, so we can start that demo and have it safe in that building.
Okay, yeah.
Where, where we'll program it during construction? That's probably fair.
Oh, there, I was about to go right now. Everything running through the campus, that was in three weeks.
Yeah, after school.
We should have the architecturals by this fall, correct, Jeff?
Yeah, we're in and out and going to, to start construction involved.
So as soon as we have them, council member gives them, provide council an update on it. But we wanted y'all to see the progress that's been made. Because Jeff and his team have been working both with the staff at the Nickel Town Community Center as well as the Saford Group. And they've made a lot of progress. And we wanted y'all to see how things are coming along.
Good deal.
Yeah, conceptually, you can see what we're, some of our goals are. That building is super squatty and no windows, trying to raise it up, bring in some natural light. So I think we're in a good place and heading in the right direction.
That's good. Thank you.
Southern Side Multi Service Center is another investment into our neighborhoods. This project will demolish an existing building and then construct a new 2,500 square foot facility for the neighborhood. This one is also in design and we are looking to go out for the, in, next month in July.
Where?
Where the existing center is, we're rebuilding the existing center. It was determined to, it was more.
Yeah, you can see the existing one is a two-story. At, at the end of its useful life, and this new facility, one-story embraces the, the street, the neighborhood, it's in line on the design side with those other moments.
We hope to be in construction on this by, by late fall also.
That's right, yeah. Balla Multi Service Center is a similar type project. We're gonna demolish the old building and use a similar floor plan to what we've done with Southern Side. So mimic that floor plan will work well in this space. And we hope to be underway with design next month. And we'll track towards first of the year for starting construction on that project.
We're using, using tip money for that?
We are, we're using Balla tip, yes. And then the big one, our public home road, Public Safety Campus and Municipal Complex. After a couple of years of working with you all on this one, we are almost complete. Our contractor tells us they will be substantially complete next month. The existing furniture that was with the building, we bought it for Daniel, will start moving back into the building in a couple of weeks. And we expect to have our first tenants then move out there in early August. And we're gonna do a slow move on in various departments. We have about nine divisions going out there, police, fire, municipal court, engine operating, GIS, HR, human resources, employee health center. And then we'll also do the traffic management center, which I think you'll hear about in the next presentation.
We should have everybody, I think the move-in schedule is anticipated to have everybody moved in by the end of October.
That's correct.
So we're gonna do a, you know, a department by department move in. And of course, trying to make sure that we have all of, everything ready with IT and that we have no issues with that. The last thing that we'll switch over will be dispatch.
Dispatch will be very last, yes.
Yes. I'm sorry.
Is it on time? What we anticipated? Moving.
Pretty much. I mean, I think the idea was that we would move in, in July. But we're gonna be done in July, but we're close, yeah.
You're saying that you have a question?
But we do, we do want to do a staggered move in and not just fit everybody in at once.
Who gets to meet the narrator?
It makes sense.
You?
I'll move it. Who gets to meet the narrator? Who gets to go first?
IT.
IT.
So they can test.
Council chambers. Just kidding, there's no council chambers. Not yet.
So just a couple of shots, you can see on the left, this is a new public entry, looking down from the overhead mezzanine on the second floor. And then this is one of Judge Holy courtrooms on the lower right.
It was really good.
It was really nice.
If any of y'all would like to go through, council. If you haven't had a chance to walk through, let, let us know. And we'll get a, we'll get a time schedule for you to do a walkthrough.
Let's do it.
Okay, so I did one before they put in the, the outside, the new lobby area, etc. But still have same furniture in there, I'm good. I mean, it's the same thing going. I'm good.
And then we've got a few parks and zoo projects. The Africa Plaza out of the zoo is a new exhibit for the tortoise and porcupines. It is adjacent to the giraffes and it is nearing completion. This project has been hammered by rain, but they should be done in the next couple of weeks. It doesn't look all that well in this picture, but you can see in just a week's time, they, they made really good progress on the structure. Our visitors will be able to stand here on this plaza and look down and see the animals in there, in the middle. The International Farmyard and venue space at the. It's kind of at the entry where the elephants were a while back. So that is entering into design. And this will be, as I said, a farmyard at the lower level. And then overhead will be an event space and this is funded through the foundation. And it's just kicked off in design. And then Cleveland Park Tennis, we received bids last month and we're getting ready to start this. It's gonna be six new tennis courts, two pickleball, and then a full-size basketball court. And we're gonna renovate the parking lot and do a landscape package as well for this. And it will be underway, like I said, next month. And then they hope to be done by November. And then a couple of Unity Park projects to wrap this up. The Honor Tower, we have the groundbreaking last, or two weeks ago. And we are, Harper is well underway. They've driven H piles, H beam piles into bedrock to support the structure and starting to excavate for a concrete foundation that will attach to those H beams. And then the inner core assembly, kind of the elevator shaft of the tower, is under fabrication at SC Steel over at Taylor's. And that will arrive on the site next month. They'll come in, it's 80-foot tall structure that will come in in two 40-foot sections. So by the end of July, you'll see kind of the skeleton of the tower take shape. And they'll build the rest of the tower, all of that structure. And you see the, these are the beams as they were being driven in, it's bedrock. And that's a portion of the, the inner core assembly. And looking at it, 12, no, 12, 14 month window for construction, so late in that summer will be complete.
14 months, right?
14 months. The ball field adjacent to the tower, in fact, you can kind of see the tower from the, behind the field. We are in design with Parks and Rec and our donor, working on that to make sure everybody's happy. And this is the latest concept we received last week from the design team. There's a little league field with grandstand, press box, dugouts, bullpen, warm-up area, as well as kind of a overhanging seating area or event space adjacent to the field. We're really excited about that. And another view, you can see the tower on the left.
Grandstand is right there.
What's that?
Grandstand.
That's, that's right, another grandstand and press box. You've got, you know, new dugouts and, and the bullpen, warm-up area. Really want this to be a really special place for the little league kids to come play. I think they want to all rotate a game or two throughout the season to be here. Yeah. And we, we're gonna use Harper for this one. So taking advantage of them being mobilized for the tower. And we'll build this during the, the timeline of the title as well. Addressing some, some of the concern about parking, as I mentioned earlier, down at the end of Walker Street, what we, and they called the triangle for so long. We're formalizing that with some paved parking, as well as finishing off the head-end parking in front of the warehouses down at the end to add about 51 spaces to the parking inventory. And they should be paving tomorrow. So this will be finished by the end of this week, substantially complete and be ready for the full July festival.
And we might want to, you know, I alluded this earlier, but just take a look and maybe look at some parking strategies. You know, is it, is it appropriate to put some 30 minutes and two hours, some all day? Kind of, you know, what, what works best? So just having those conversations.
We did that on the head-end parking in front of the businesses. We've got some 30-minute sections, but we haven't looked at it from the, the rest of the overall parking lot. We've got some thirty-minute sections, but we haven't looked at it from the, the rest of the overall top of that, that considered. The uni park maintenance shop down at the end of uh, one fifty-nine Western Street is a lease, a renovation and lease for the city for our team that takes care of the park. It is nearing completion. We hope to move them in, in late August. It's about eight thousand square foot shop with thirty-eight hundred foot feet of equipment space. Got a couple of offices, eight workstations for employees, break room, conference room. Uh, it's a great space for that team and they're excited to be in there. And I said, hopefully, end of August, we'll move them in and, and they can get rolling in their new space.
It looks great inside.
A little better than we used to.
They've done a great job, our team's done a great job, it looks great. I think that our team ought, should be very happy with their new space, yeah. All right, well, thank you very much, Jeff. Questions from council? Any questions or any further discussion on any of the updates from the project management office?
Good stuff.
All right, thank you all.
Thank you.
Let's up next, let Nick, I think Nick's here with him, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right. That's the country dude.
Patricia.
Give me, give me one more name. Give me one more name, you don't wanna, I could ban it.
All right, we are gonna move into. We're gonna move into our next, um, our next update and we're gonna talk about our neighborhood infrastructure bond. Patricia's gonna go over all of the dollars with us. Um, and then we'll get into the actual projects themselves. Remember, you all, you know, went, um, it's been four years now, I think, since you all decided on to do the neighborhood infrastructure bond, to invest in neighborhoods and people throughout the city. Um, and this is our second, our second tranche that we're going for. So um, wanted you all to have an update of when we're gonna draw that money down and what we're looking to fund with the, with the next portion of the dev. So Patricia, I will turn it over to you.
So Nick and Clint are gonna need to talk about um, what projects these funds are going to go for. But um, in twenty twenty-two, the city authorized the issuance of up to fifty-five million of um, installment purchase revenue bonds through ordinance twenty twenty-two dash thirty-two. Uh, the initial issuance was twenty-eight point seven million and took place in twenty-two, twenty twenty-two. Um, and we are proposing an additional eighteen million. This is part of the F Y uh, twenty-five budget. It'll be issued under the Public Facilities Corporation, so it doesn't impact the city's overall debt limit. Um, and targeting bank placement, um, we'll issue an R F P and, and look at rates, you know, with maturities of fifteen, twenty years. So I know Jeff had touched on a couple uh, new projects at the um, see, it's the, the project uh, management group is handling, P M O group. Um, like the Nickel Town, um, as well as the Cleveland Ports, but then also lots of sidewalks and other infrastructure projects.
Yep, so um, so engineering's been managing the roads, the bridges, sidewalks, and traffic management improvement projects that were um, a big part of the dev. Um, and uh, kinda just got a somewhat of a high-level update. We can get into any specific details on any of the projects as you wish.
We, we love the details, so.
Yeah, good.
We love the details.
Um, so just where we are today, uh, we completed nine of the projects. And so again, we're focused on roads, bridges, sidewalks, and traffic management. Uh, but we've completed uh, nine of the projects. We've got six currently in construction and with the remaining projects to be in construction in this next fiscal year. Uh, so what I'm expecting is, uh, what we're anticipating right now is all projects will either be um, in construction or completed within the next year. And there are a few sidewalk projects that are gonna take us a little longer to finish out, but we expect to have it. We're hoping by summer of twenty twenty-six, all of the nip, these nip riders are complete, uh, based on our timeline.
And when you say all, then all of those that we proposed?
Yeah, yes, and let me caveat out of that. Um, we're gonna talk about some of the challenges with some of the sidewalk um, projects primarily being cost-driven. Uh, we've seen significant higher cost now than when we, what we were estimating. Um, we've got a, a plan of how we're moving forward to uh, to, with some other C fund applications and some other grant applications uh, that we're very optimistic about. Uh, that allow us to give us that supplemental funding that we're gonna need to finish those sidewalk projects. There are three sidewalk projects, uh, uh, one is Ackley Road, the other two is Mount Houston Stag. Um, those are in, um, Ackley Road's got some more roadway reconstruction work. That's how to be done as part of it to get the sidewalk in. Um, so that's just more, there's some right-of-way involved and then there's some uh, road reconstruction costs that we'll have to figure out. That's above the, beyond what you estimate, but just sidewalk project. Uh, Mount Houston Stag, there's some right-of-way issues with those streets, but it's also part of the Green Line Spartan where master planning efforts. So we're, we're really gonna complete the master planning effort uh, before we would wanna try to proceed with that this project.
So we're optimistic that we're gonna be able to finish all of those three projects?
Yes.
Okay.
But there were some like key drive that this solution um, wasn't as straightforward as we initially thought. And so we've previously talked about shifting that, um, I think it required a bridge or.
Yeah.
You know, so there's, just for, to be transparent, there are some projects that uh, aren't simple uh, sidewalk projects anymore and, and carving those out so that we can get these others done.
Right, yeah. So. Does that mean we're coming back to those, or does that mean?
Well, keep driving, one, I think the last update we did on NIP projects was last year. And we talked about some of these products that were a little bit, we were uh, trying to figure out feasibility of the projects. They were estimated through our normal sidewalk uh, construction, um, kind of estimating and kind of how we handle most out of projects. And some of these roads that are involving a little more road reconstruction work, possibly were even kind of maybe maybe some pedestrian bridges might be required. Um, so those projects, we're in the engineering phase right now. We're getting a little more, getting a better idea of what's going to be involved, get this project done. Uh, I think we have figured that out, but it is gonna require some additional funding and we'll talk about what we want to.
So back to the funding part, um, we had all roads up to fifty-five. And we did an initial range of twenty-eight and then we're doing another one of seventy?
Eighteen.
Eighteen. Alright, so that puts us at forty-six. Got my.
Yep.
Basic cap. Um, are we looking at still another nine or what are we doing?
At this point, we are not looking at, at doing an additional movement.
Okay, alright.
I, I think it'd be more clear.
Yeah, let's get into the presentation if we could and then we'll come out to the, to the question.
Yeah, we, we have a slide to explain.
Next one where we are, we spent out about sixty-one percent of the roads and bridges from the sidewalk traffic management funds. Um, with over thirty-eight percent about to spend.
So um, as we're, as we're leaving one phase and going into the other, one thing that focused on those, um, our successes so far. Um, so as Patricia mentioned in twenty-two, um, we got to go ahead to, to go ahead and start working on some projects. So we, we started, started getting to work. Um, we started a lot of projects that had an immediate impact on the neighborhoods, a huge safety impact. Um, and it's been great for multi-modal uh, modal transportation. Um, pedestrian safety was one of the first things that we did. It was a pilot project on Dustin Street, we sent a new crash reduction rate out there. Um, I T S devices, we have a slide coming up that'll cover all the traffic management stuff later on. So first of all, about on that one. Um, resurfacing and restriping, uh, we actually put this as an opportunity to not just look at, you know, filling potholes on a street or, or just making road, or just repaving the road. We wanted to look at how can you really make this street function better, make it safer for people. Um, so we actually ended up um, going and matching the nine million that was set aside for resurfacing and matched that dollar to dollar, so ended up with eighteen million for resurfacing, which was a huge win for us. Um, it allowed us to get a total of twenty-five miles paved and ten of those we added uh, enhancements for new bike lanes too. So not only are we looking at these streets from a paving standpoint, we're looking at these from a happily improved pedestrian lanes. How can we add high visibility crosswalks, bike lanes, green paint, all the improvements that we can possibly do through resurfacing. Um, so phase one saw seventeen miles of those were completed and seven of those were enhanced with enhanced bike lanes, which was an incredible win for us. And we were able to also get two other sidewalks, express street and Long Don'tland, in our first phase of sidewalks completed. And then we move on to what we're working on right now. Um, so all of these are in some phase of construction and the, the base that you'll see are originally anticipated in construction to be complete. So phase two of resurfacing, we've already started um, on the rampport and pedestrian improvements. Um, so you'll, we'll actually start paid in here um, within the next month. So we're hoping to be done with that by the end of the year. Uh, it's possible some of the striping enhancements go on into the spring, just contractor availability issues. But the majority of the work, um, substantial completion end of this year. Um, concrete mediums, we just received bids, um, bids were good. We'll, so we'll be seeing some access management and some safety improvements on Orange Road. Um, and uh, was crossing and.
Are those the medias we looked at about a year ago?
Yes.
Orange Road?
Yes.
Okay, so that's gonna be in the, that coming quarter this year, we'll see those.
We did last week on that. Uh, we had, we showed several places uh, that we were looking at. Um, and we're doing as many of those locations as we can, we're putting us in a long orange road.
Yeah, okay. Also on Field Street, I was probably there this morning and that's the right curb. It's almost completely black now from people hitting it. Uh, what are we doing to make sure that people know that that curb is now there?
So.
On the right side?
On the right side, yeah. So a few things, um, the project's not done, so on any single project, and this will be saying, the same on the P H D, the Stone Avenue. They wanted to go ahead and get the road work in for this baseball season. Uh, but all the mass arms are on backward, so it takes six to eight months just to get the poles. Um, so once the poles go in and we're able to do the landscaping, so there'll be some understory trees and lots more um, vertical alerts that, hey, there's a curb here, there's, there's landscaping here. Um, so it'll be, it'll be a lot more noticeable once the landscaping and the city poles are actually in. Um, so that'd be great. Uh, sidewalk phase two, we are in construction on Patoma and Long Hill Street. Um, so that will probably be done by the end of the year, early next year. And Mohawk City State and Sidewalk Phase Three, which includes um, Chick Springs, which went over to Mohawk, Galvin, Anderson, and Lindley. Those are all um, going to bid right now. So likely that project will take about a year, maybe a little bit more. They'll do one street at a time. Um, I mean, in the case of Chick Springs, Mohawk, Galvin, they're all right next to each other, so they'll probably just move seamlessly from one to the other. That's how we kinda try to get the, the prices down is um, less mobilization costs, etc. But um, it will be a long process for, for those streets, but we are excited to get started here. Um, in the coming month or so. And then coming soon, so uh, as I mentioned before, the final phase of sidewalks, we have the next slide will cover that funding issue. So I'll, I'll follow on that one and I'll follow them to I T F five desk now until, till we decide. But um, Willer Street Village, we are at about ninety-five percent complete on the plans. So I'm, I'm honestly expecting to be able to go to bid on that. Um, probably in the next um, month or two. And that project, to just remind everybody, it's um, the bridge needs to be replaced, but we're also taking it to enhance um, the smart road trail crossings at the bridge location. So right now, they're kinda, they're kinda hard to see, the, the site distance is low. Um, and we're, we're gonna improve that and make sure it's a much safer crossing at this point right now, right?
Praise the law.
So it's a, it's a tough crossing there, so we're going there to the, the bridge project, something like that, but.
Thank you.
And then the West End Road that is sidewalk project, we actually will be opening bids on that on July fifth. Um, so we will have a contractor on board and that will not be a long budget. Um, so I anticipate all these dates where we will open this, like this, and I'll antici- anticipate next few months, we'll, we'll be in, under contract in a year, yeah.
So that was a, I know that was a quick run-through of the projects we've completed and kinda where we are with construction. Um, again, these are, these are resurfacing, these are sidewalk projects, traffic calming, safety projects. Um, by far, I mean, those are huge impacts to our neighborhoods.
Oh, yes.
Some of the most popular programs we have, as you know, in the city is, is our sidewalk program and then our resurfacing program. So uh, we, I mean, we're just thrilled to have the funds to be able to really make a, have a big impact on the neighborhoods. Uh, the fact that our, our friends at the C Fund Committee was able to match us um, nine million dollars for our resurfacing is a huge um, boost to the program. Uh, we have seen, and we'll talk about just some of the challenges we've seen with just increased cost. For me, we initially estimated these projects, uh, but still, we're just dealing some significant improvements in the neighborhood. So we're, we're excited about that. Uh, I think what boiled down to when you had the C funds, um, money, were around thirty-five million dollars in investment. Um, and we started this in the spring of twenty twenty-two and I'm expecting to have it done. Hopefully, uh, we're expecting to have it done by summer of twenty twenty-six, so in four years, I mean, that's a pretty, pretty good amount of work being accomplished there, so.
So that's a projection of C funds, like three million and?
Yes, so those are some grants we're looking to apply.
What you needed for those projects you marked.
Yeah, so we estimated these projects in twenty twenty-two, we were using three hundred and forty dollars of linear foot for our sidewalk projects. The bids we're seeing and it's just been ever increasing, each bid that we put out, we're around five hundred and thirty-three dollars of input. We're hopeful, we're not seeing, that that cost is not gonna continue to increase, but maybe it's normalizing a little bit. Um, we got another bid coming up here in a few weeks with Galvin and Mohawk. It will, uh, more updated number at that point. But it's had a big impact on um, how our sidewalk is doing. Um, so with that, we, we're, we're trying to get creative and uh, look at other opportunities of how we can leverage our dollars with other funds that are out there. Um, uh, we are applying for a transportation alternatives program, that's through uh, G P A Ts. Uh, those are specifically for uh, pedestrian and bicycle um, type of projects. Um, but we're going to go um, for a one-point-three million dollar grant for the Louts Hill Road Sidewalk Project. Um, that coupled with the funding that we've, we've had identified for that, when we get that whole project done, which is about a mile of sidewalk. Uh, and then we are looking at a uh, a C fund uh, grant application. Um, the actual, the TAP grant is due at the end of this month and we'll find out about that at the Hollis G P A Ts meeting. Or we would expect to find out at that meeting, uh, the C funds application. Um, um, we're looking at submitting for C funds and that would be submit in August and we would find out um, in October. Um, so we'll have a much better idea by this fall of, of our ability to finish the sidewalk projects. Again, there's Ackley Road, Mount Houston Stag that we're um, is not included in, in our program. And that you can build it complete with the current funding or with this additional funding. We'll have to just work with O and B and city manager on, on identifying some other funding opportunities there. And finish the master plan for Green Line Spartan and try to come up with a more comprehensive effort there. Um, you know, if we put really good about the, the transit TAP funds, um, I, I'm optimistic about the C funds based on some additional funding they're getting ready to receive, they just got noted today. So uh, I think there's some good opportunities there, um, and uh, we've been communicating with them. Uh, if those projects, if those grants work to come to fruition, we'll just have to continue looking at our INSTEAP program or future C I Bs to, to have.
Great work. At five thirty-three, how does that compare to, to other markets? Do you guys know?
We, we checked with S E D O T bid prices on a lot of our estimating and that sort of thing. I'm not sure how it compares with some of the other local communities, but I would imagine it's very sensitive.
Yeah, I mean, it's sort of economic question, I was trying to figure out, is that, is that an issue of we just don't have enough competition in our?
I think so.
Road sidewalk?
I think it's providing, there's so much work out there and there's not enough contractors, um, so.
You remember just a few years ago, the legislature passed the six-hundred-million-dollar increase in, in road funding essentially? So that I think that gobbled up a lot of the, you tell me if I'm wrong.
Yeah.
Are there, um, excuse me, are there any carrots to use in terms of um, incentives through business licenses and bidding to get this work done? And or can we improve our economy to scale by joining forces with S E D O T or other municipalities on bidding packages? can we improve our economy to scale by joining forces with S E D O T or other municipalities on bidding packages together?
Well, we have been combining a lot of the streets into larger bidding, uh, packages to try to make the bid more attractive. Um, we have seen one new contractor, they recently moved, mobilized here from Virginia and they won our last two or three bids. Um, and a little bit of a learning curve with them, um, on our part and their part, but we're, they're, we're getting a lot of work underway from. Uh, and on the concrete median project that Nick mentioned was another new contractor that was previously operating as a sub, subcontractor now they've, they've kind of gotten bonded and licensed, um, and are bidding more. So we're, we are seeing a few new contractors come into the market, um, how we can leverage, um, these projects with other larger projects to get more, you know, make it more attractive. We're, we're always.
And with resurfacing, we, we are bidding with, uh, the other municipalities, so Mountain and Alden, et cetera. And some of our data preservation, we at least try to time the contracts with the contractors, so Ron Kirby, partner, has a lot of it. So we'll try to time when his bids go out with ours, so the contractor can mobilize to the, if they're a Kansas contractor or a out of state contractor, they can mobilize one time and hit the area before they.
This may be throwing spaghetti on the wall, but there is a ten-foot section on West Prentice of sidewalk. It's not concrete, it's a forest natural. Do you know the one I'm talking about? Like, I thought we did it. Anywho, I just wonder if there are alternative.
Materials.
Materials to use for sidewalks that may get us an advantage that we explore, or is that kind of a dead end?
Well, you have the ADA's obviously critical when we're dealing with sidewalks. We have to think about materials that are going to be compliant with ADA requirements. Anytime you start getting outside of normal construction practices, you.
It gets up.
Yeah.
Um, on the TAP grant, Clint, you said you'll hear about that in August, in fact?
Uh, TAP will, hopefully G P A Ts will vote on that if they're August and May.
So here's my question, if we don't, if we aren't successful there, aren't successful to the one point three that you need, do we have time to adjust and roll in what more we need in the absence of TAP into the C fund grant applications at that same month? Do you see what I'm saying? Sounds like we're hearing about.
We want it the August we take and then. It'd be one week timeline there to slide it in.
Okay. It'll be a parallel path thing. I don't know. I, I've never heard of the TAP grant. I don't know how, how, what our confidence factor is on it, but.
Right. As of right now, we've been really good.
Okay, I think we've got one more slide.
Uh, Traffic Management Center. So this is a picture of, of, from the Traffic Manager Center out at Halton Road, uh, it's coming on very nicely. We got our video wall installed, uh, within the last couple of weeks and, uh, we're doing things to kind of get it up and running. We've got our operator stations set up. I know that the other offices have been renovated. Um, but really excited about the, the T M C. Uh, our plan is to move in there, uh, in the month of September. Um, Valerie and David and Dante will be heading over there. Um, we do have, um, through the funding that was proven at Block Twenty-four, um, we have secured a traffic management consultant that is going to help us get the T M C kind of up and running. Um, it's Parsons is the, is the consulting firm and they're going to help us, uh, they're going to have a, a, an employee in here, an operator, uh, senior level operator to help us get T M C up and running, um, since this is kind of new to us. Um, but they're also our consultant for doing signal timing plans on our corridors. They're working on Pleasantburg, it's Stone Avenue, Lawrence and Broke Ground Road right now, uh, three of the main boulevards they're working. I think they got fifty signals, uh, that's going to be part of the re-timing effort. Um, and all of that signal re-timing, all of the I T S devices that got funded through the NIB with our monitoring cameras, our data collection, uh, equipment, all of that information ultimately feeds back into this, this nerve center, if you will, of the T M C, which just helps us really be able to have eyes throughout the city of the traffic, uh, to improve our communication abilities with police and fire, uh, communications, um, department, um, there are special events, there are incidents on our roadways. Um, so excited to be, uh, where we are with the T M C, um, and we'll have that up and running this fall. Um, and I think it's just going to further our, enhance our ability to improve overall traffic management in the city.
I know, I know we already know this, I'm sure we will, but this is such a big investment by the city and it is so, there's nothing like it probably in all of South Carolina. I hope we really think about our marketing, our marketing investments, our best will be all over it because it'll be something to roll out for a good period of time to understand what's going on.
And I think too, we, we, we hear, we hear from constituents about, you know, we're experiencing in South Carolina a high level of growth. Like so many other quality communities, people are moving there. And I, I'm mayor used to this many times and this is a, a proper way, an effective way of, of addressing growth and that is to invest in traffic management and how important that is.
Do we have this technology on Main Street?
Um, we have Valerie, we have Cameron on Main Street.
We do not.
Not on Main Street.
Do we have any way?
We are, we are getting ready to re-time the old C B D, um, for our signal timing adjustment. That'll be one of the next areas that we focus on, significant type of changes.
Does it, do you, can you think of any way that this technology helps us with the aforementioned noise issues downtown in terms of monitoring? I mean, I was trying to speed it, but now let me just give it to you. Data collection. On Main Street. I wish y'all could see each other because Howie's doing this.
I mean, we, we can count ours. I don't know that we can hear them. Yeah, we're not, yeah, we're not collecting sound with the equipment. We're.
Type, type of vehicle.
Well, and we all record.
So that's a no.
It's a no.
Out of the tracks.
All right, we are a few minutes over. We are supposed to be done at four twenty. Any other questions for Patricia, Clint or Nick? Great update on all the work, guys. Thank you very much.
I just wanted to tell you that I looked at, um, Cook Street. Not only it, uh, first time they ever had sidewalks, but there are three new houses, not necessarily being built by the city of Greymon, that have been put on that street while the sidewalks were being put in.
Yep.
It has changed the whole complexion of the neighborhood.
It's kind of all really nice.
Yes, it is.
And, and he's been managing that and he was showing us a real breakdown.
And he's doing a good job of letting people, you know, managing so people can get through, et cetera. It's exciting. I've been over there three times and met him to see what was going on and I was able to get through each time. I say, oh. Yes, my man. Yes, right.
All right.
Oh, yeah.
Thanks to everybody. All right, Mr. Mayor, that's everything on the regular agenda.
We have executive session, uh, some, uh, some others that they got, I'll get the favor say aye.
Aye.
It's heaven. Now we can hear what's about.
Yeah, several items discussing executive sessions afternoon. All items are permitted for discussion in executive session under South Carolina Code annotated thirty dash four to fifteen seventy A two. Legal advice regarding the city on a zoning matter, which is some litigation negotiations incident to propose contracts for acquisition of property in the vicinity of Church Street and in the Central Business District. A prospective contractor parking in the West End, a prospective contract, reporting a meeting facility downtown.
Okay.